So I'm going to welcome everyone tonight to our meeting. This is the open meeting for the Sherburne School Committee for October the 13th, 2020, and it's being conducted consistently consistent with the remote open meeting laws for Zoom meetings per Governor Baker's executive order from March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency due to COVID. In order to mitigate transmissions, we're doing these meetings remotely now. And for this meeting, the Sherburne School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom, and that is posted on the Dover Sherburne Regional School website and identifies how the public may in fact join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, so just notice that you may be on a window on the screen, and so that will then be posted at a later date. So just that by participating in this video conference, you acknowledge that this could be transmitted later. Also, be aware that other folks can see you and take care not to screen share your computer, that anything that you do could be broadcast and captured in the recording. We do have public community comments as we always do in these meetings. The thing is, since we're all in these little boxes, just use your comment time wisely. We try to cap those at three minutes. And also, if there's a point that's already been made, if we can try to just move the conversation forward so that everyone has a chance to be heard, because I don't want anyone to not be able to make a point if they have come onto our meeting site. So with that being said, there's also a little bit of meeting etiquette. As the chair, I will acknowledge you. You can either use the reactions on the side. You can try to, you know, raise your hand that way, or you can just raise your hand in the box, and Dawn Fattoria will help me to look to see whether or not there's somebody. If you, for some reason, are not acknowledged and you have raised your hand or something, just please let me know. And I will acknowledge those persons when I see that you have a question. As for the community comment section, that's the only time we really hear from the public. The rest of the time when we're doing votes, et cetera, it is reserved for the school committee members. But that being said, if there's something that goes on in the meeting and you would like further clarification, I encourage you to reach out to your school committee members. You can reach out to us via email. And also, we have our phone numbers on the website, and we're happy to speak with you and make sure that we can either get an answer to you or find the answer that you may need. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and get the meeting started. So we'll call that to order, and I will start with community comments. Is there anyone who has a comment? Do you see anyone, Dawn?
No hands raised.
Okay, I was looking like in my chat section too, just to make sure.
Chat's not activated.
Okay, well, then that would be why I don't see any in the chat. Okay, well, with that being said, we're going to move on now to our CSA co-presidents. And before we turn it to them, I just want to first express that I thank both Royal and Tara for doing this job. I know it was hard to do this job when we weren't in COVID, and you could get people to come, and I would imagine now it's become even more difficult. But I just want you to know that it's very appreciated, and I know the kids get a lot out of it, not only from the programming, extra programming that you give, but in times of non-COVID, things such as the Monster Mash and other things are really enjoyed. And I'm hoping, you know, sooner rather than later, we'll be back to those normals. Just like last year, the maze that they had, the hay maze, that was awesome. I mean, everything is just so much fun, so I wanted to thank you all. So I'm going to turn it over. You all can decide who wants to speak to Tara and Royal. And if you all will just, like, say who you are, so if people don't know you on this call, then they can get to know you.
Hi, I'll start. So I am Tara Horahan, and as Angie said, I'm one of the co-presidents of the CSA this year. And as you can imagine, the CSA looks a little bit different this year. So last spring, we did have a couple fundraisers planned. One was the big Spring Luau event, and it was going to be the first Luau. And everything was ready, and then, you know, COVID hit and things were closed down the week before it was going to happen. So we had that fundraiser planned, and then the book fair. And despite all that, we still ended up in the positive. So we still had extra funds at the end of the year, so that was great. And so then this year, the budget took a little bit of readjusting, certainly. And we did find funds to approve these portable readers for the teachers to use remotely. And I've heard from some teachers that they're really useful, and they've thanked us, and that's been great. We also sponsored the back-to-school luncheon we were able to do for the teachers. The teachers held it outside, and we had Panera deliver it, so all very safe. We were not able to have our pups to go back to school social, of course. And that's one of the changes that happened. And as Angie mentioned, no Monster Mash this year. But the CSA has been doing a great job coming up with some ideas and brainstorming. So we're very appreciative for all the members we have this year. And the CSA meetings this year are on Zoom, as expected. And we're still trying to adjust one of our day meeting times because it's tougher for the parents to join because they are remote learning at home with the kids, or at least half of them are. So we may have to switch to a Wednesday day instead of our Thursdays. Our communications team, well, communications being key this year, they've reactivated our Facebook page as another means to communicate with the community. So that's been great. And they also still send out the weekly newsletters, and they update the website. And then this year, they're going to be changing the web platform from Wix to Squarespace. So everything will be in one, on one platform, which will be nice and more convenient for them to use. I touched briefly on the fundraising, and so we did have the mask fundraiser at the beginning of the year. It was a quick, like, one-week fundraiser, and we generated about $270. So it wasn't a huge revenue stream for that, but it was nice to collaborate with chickering on that. And we're hoping to work with them again and partner with them again this year. And then this year, there's a chance we might be replacing the spring auction with other fundraising events throughout the year, including like a virtual book fair and then some other ideas that have not yet been nailed down, but they're all in the works. And then, of course, the big focus is on how do we connect with families this year? So we're brainstorming on that as well. And now I'll turn it over to Royal.
Hi, I am Royal Abrams, and like everyone said, it's certainly an interesting year to be president of the CSA. We've had to sort of tweak and adjust everything that we do. Something that we didn't adjust or change is the teacher stipends. Each year, we give stipends to full-time teachers and part-time teachers at Pine Hill. The full-time teachers got $250, and the part-time teachers or specialists got 150 each, and that equaled about $10,000. And we were able to provide that about the second week of school for the teachers to buy supplies or whatever they may need for their classroom and learning virtually this year. Something that we had to change as well is the Pine Hill 5K. It was held virtually this year during a two-week span in September. We're still in the process of figuring out how much money was raised for it, but over 100 people participated. So we're happy to see some people get out and running. We're sad, though, it wasn't able to be held in our traditional manner. We're trying to connect new families, which I think it could be really hard, especially in Sherburne if you've just moved in during COVID. So we're really trying hard to reach out to those families, and each new family has been paired with a veteran family at Pine Hill. Historically, we've had, like, meetups or events at the Heritage or having playdates, but obviously, we can't do any of that this year. So we are hoping to set up some grade-based or family Zooms or something just to get them welcomed to the community and learning some more and meeting some new people. But as you can imagine, that's very hard during this time. For our Metco family friends, the Boston students were given welcome bags containing various school supplies at the beginning of the year. And we also did have our first virtual Zoom for families in Boston that was held last month. And they're hoping that can kind of continue and expand in the future. A big thing that is going to be moving online this year is our Pine Hill School Directory, which is, everyone pretty much loves these directories. So it's a big shift to get them online, but I think it will be a lot more functional and user-friendly, and we're able to make changes if people move in. And so that's something that's being explored right now and sort of trying to transition over to that. So that'll be an exciting thing coming. And last is the Pine Hill Garden. Especially this year, more people are spending a lot more time outside, and we're sort of coordinating with teachers to see how this can best fit their curriculum needs this year, especially more of outdoor classroom stuff. Also, a pumpkin patch was supposed to be planted last spring during COVID, and it was not planted. So we're hoping that it can be planted this spring. So there's a lot to come with the Pine Hill Garden Committee. It's just a lot of it is on hold right now. And that's kind of a quick snapshot of what we have been doing since the beginning of the year and what we're starting to do moving forward. And we're trying to be very creative with most of the fundraising, like Tara said, moving forward. So thank you for having us at this meeting tonight.
Well, thank you. So school committee members, do you all have any questions for Tara or Royal? Because what I was going to say, I was going to ask you all, because I know since fundraising is in a different place, obviously, if anyone is out there that wants to donate or contribute, like either say attached onto the 5K or whatever, I'm sure you would be happy to have checks or online donations for anything. So that's one thing that I even had a previous school committee member who had no children left at Pine Hill for many, many years. He's like, if somebody hits me up, I'm going to give them money. So with that being said, I encourage anybody who's on here, if you want to donate, you know, $25, $50 or whatever to Pine Hill so they can continue, because the stipends, it all does add up to a lot. And really, the things that the CSA gives to, it helps the school become a whole and unique learning experience for everyone. It helps the teachers, the students, the administration, so I encourage it. And I just, I think you all have done a fantastic job of pivoting and going virtual. And the virtual book fair, I'd be very interested in. I always love the book fair, it's one of my favorite things. So thank you all, and thanks for your hard work. I know now it's twice as hard and it's twice as much work virtually. Everybody says, oh, it must be easier. I'm like, no, you spend all your time trying to get to that point. You work twice as hard to get half as much product, but you're doing a great job. And if you need anything from us as the school committee, please just reach out, and we're happy, happy to help in any way we can.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so next are our reports. We're going to pivot to Dr. Brown and let her give her report.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you again to Tara and Royal. The, as socially distanced as we are, you know, and, you know, at this time, parent volunteers aren't in the building, and at a time where we could feel disconnected from our families, the spirit of the CSA that you and all of the other representatives continue to perpetuate is really palpable. The commitment to our students and the teacher-family partnerships are as strong as ever. So thank you for that and continuing to shepherd that. Our last school committee meeting was three weeks ago, so my report is a little shorter than usual. I suspect that we'll be talking about Phase Two later in the meeting, so I won't, I won't belabor that other than to say, from the school administration perspective, we will be ready. Schedules are adjusted. Dawn and the custodial crew from multiple buildings have been working hard to get individual student desks back into Pine Hill so that we can better control the distance between students, looking at staffing, making sure that we have all of the considerations for students having minimal transition throughout the building and, you know, that density is controlled from drop-off to pickup and everything in between. So everybody's been working really hard. Our special subject teachers are going to continue to be taught remotely. I mentioned, with the exception, currently, we have PE in person and one of the Spanishes in person. Ms. Hodge will be teaching in person when we go to Phase Two. We're obviously in adherence with the guidelines. Unfortunately, there's no singing, which is the pinnacle of Pine Hill School. But if anyone can bring new and creative energy to the music program, it's Kelly Hodge. So obviously, she'll continue to post asynchronous opportunities for third graders to participate in the recorder, and we will continue to sing our hearts out at all school meeting. But Kelly will bring new and additional focus to the general music curriculum, which I'm sure will be just as enjoyable. I wanted to mention, I know, you know, we talk a lot about educator growth and supervision and evaluation throughout our school committee meetings. Our educators are finalizing, setting their professional practice and student learning goals, which are due October 15th. These goals are what help us drive and support professional growth individually and collectively. A lot of our teams write team goals. In some cases, we're, we're working on lofty district goals. And of course, there's an opportunity for educators to develop or have their principals help them develop individual goals as well. So, so all of that is happening. Most of you, I think all but Angie, are getting our, receiving our e-blast through, through your family communications. And I wanted to make available here the virtual open house presentations that our teachers collaborated on and shared with families absent the opportunity to bring everybody into the classrooms in the more traditional meet and greet curriculum night forums, where we have minimal events happening. What a teacher told me today, she's the Monday, Tuesday cohort teacher. Today, while, while we're in the fifth week of school, today was just the seventh day for our Group One to meet in part because of some Monday holidays. So it's been a really long five weeks, but a really quick cohort turnaround for students with their, with their classroom teachers. So you see the events that we've had this past three weeks are, you know, are certainly not as extensive as during non-COVID times. But I certainly wanted to highlight the great work. Royal, you already mentioned the Metco Friends and Family Meeting. I just wanted to highlight that that was both the efforts of the the Pine Hill CSA and the Chickering PTO. So it was a great Dover Sherburne-Boston parent forum I happen to, happen to have joined. Professional development, we are continuing to support teachers through virtual development with Teachers College. And I highlighted something that Teachers College is offering this year for new educators, of which we have many at Pine Hill. So that, that's a great way for new educators to be supported in readers' and writers' workshop in addition to the wonderful collaboration with their grade-level teams and the really powerful coaching that they get from Jen Ryan, our literacy coach, regarding the instructional models. So great things are happening, and we're prepared for Phase Two when it's deemed appropriate for us to go there. So I'm done with my report, unless you have questions for me.
Does anyone have a question for Dr. Brown on the school committee? So the next portion of your packet, thank you, Dr. Brown. The, actually, I was going to ask if the access to any of the online things, like you said, I wasn't getting. Can I get added to that, Dr. Brown, so I can see the blast?
Yes.
Can I ask you that? Just so I can. I don't know who is the new Karen, so.
Kristin Debus, who was formerly out front in reception, is the new Karen. And you'll be very pleased, Ms. Johnson. We have a lovely, capable former classroom teacher now working in reception in Sharma Horsh, and she brings some southern charm and hospitality to the Pine Hill School, which you of all people can appreciate.
So she can translate sometimes, because I think sometimes I say things and people look at me because they need a translation. There you go. Thank you. So I'll get on, if I can get on that, that would be great, because sometimes people ask me things. I'm like, I don't know, I've aged out. I'd like to put Nash back, but, you know, he can't go back. I really like that. So with, if there are no other questions, I mean, other than that, I feel like things are going, but I'm, I, it's wild to think it's only the seventh really in-person instructional day. But I know all their instruction is going well. So the next thing is the warrants, and I have nothing to say about these unless you do, Dawn. I just signed another whole slew of warrants last week.
Yeah, yeah. This report is short, as Barr mentioned, since we just met three weeks ago. But I will point out that you'll notice the warrant that was charged to your CARES reopening. So we are utilizing that grant, so just to bring that to your attention.
Okay. And if anyone wants to see the warrants, they're always down at Town Hall. You just have to call to get an appointment to go in because they're not there every day. So that's that. With that, there's another report that I wanted to add in, which is Dr. Keough. If he could give a short report about where we are now and where we're going.
Yes, absolutely. Angie, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Tara and Royal, much appreciated. So yes, what I would like to do is just speak to kind of the elephant in the room, which is the letter I sent home to families this afternoon and to our staff about our recent benchmark data. We, we did see an uptick into, actually, can I share my screen, Dawn?
All set.
Okay, hang on. That might not be as easy as I thought. One second, I'm almost there. So this is, I'm just sharing the website, so it's not anything new to people. But you can see that this bar is the green that we refer to, that we want to be in for two weeks in a row prior to returning our kids. That, that was not the, that was not just a random number. It was actually thought through by our Health and Hygiene Committee, and it's what we put forward to the Boards of Health that they signed off on. Could we revisit that, I suppose? Because you can see on the right-hand side that yellow and green are all considered hybrid. However, this, what's important to mention is that this is what was agreed upon. So this, in that document that I sent home, the reopening document to our families last week, along with the Screencastify, that was the, those were the metrics that were agreed upon with our Teachers Association, and I do feel obligated to honor that agreement. So given that we were up on October, October 7th into the yellow, I would like us to be in the green for two consecutive weeks, which would be obviously the 14th and the 21st. That would move our, our new start date from the 20, sorry, from the 19th to the 26th. And again, that's an assumption that we could be back in the green. I, it's not necessary for anyone to tell me how frustrating that is. I completely understand. It's frustrating for us too, because we did everything we could to create a model that was logical, that we could follow, that, that was based and rooted in science and not just a hunch. And so it's frustrating to me that we ticked up right at the last moment. I obviously had been concerned about that possibility, and I think that's just kind of the year we're looking at. And I think it's really important for people to remember that. And we've been so hyper-focused on, we've been so hyper-focused on these numbers only. But, you know, we still have to, we have, we have many kind of other concerns that have to be ironed out before we can go with an expanded opening. The question comes up, you know, well, why can't we just bring them back? Bring them all back at once? First of all, that wasn't part of the plan. Secondly, we mentioned that infrastructure, making sure that we have the space, making sure that we can accommodate lunches and snacks, indoor recess, and still adhere to the safety protocols outlined by the state and CDC and DPH. And the fact of the matter is, some of those are going to be really tough. Some of those are really tough hurdles. For example, if we brought back, I'll talk about enrollments in a few minutes, but if we brought back fifth grade, it may be, it may be so tight that we might not be able to do it. And that's just the hard truth. So I don't want to just focus on these numbers. It's important that we have these numbers, but we, we were trying to have the whole package in order to stay safe. I know that, that Dr. Vitale is on. He and Jill Fedora and Kay Peterson, and now Dr. Beavers, the Boards of Health have really worked hard with us to come up with a model that we think is, is safe. And unfortunately, with this tick into yellow, it, it pops us out another week at least. That said, as I said before, if, if we, you know, if we as a system want to start looking at that further, we can, but I really think, I feel pretty strongly that we've got a model that will work for us, and I'd like to stick with it. So that's, that's the long and short of it.
So do any school committee members have any questions for Dr. Keough? So I'm going to, so just, we're just resuming, Dr. Keough, just to be clear, the same way we're going to resume, just one week out is the way.
Well, that, yeah, so that's the plan. If we can string those two consecutive weeks of being in the green. And if we wanted to change that, I guess what I'm saying is, if we wanted to change all that, we've gone down a pretty significant road at this point. We've informed everyone, teachers, parents, this is the model that we're following. If we wanted to change that, it's going to be a pretty hefty reboot, and so I'm really not in favor of that. I think people know and understand what we're looking at right now, and that's not such an easy thing. Matt has spelled this out on those benchmark graphs, which, by the way, everyone can access on that webpage, so you can monitor. In fact, that data will come out tomorrow afternoon or early evening. So we'll get that first set, and if it, if it goes back to green, we're on our way. We just need one more week's worth, and we'll be in a good place.
Well, if there aren't any questions from the school committee for Dr. Keough, we'll move on to the fiscal year '21 monthly financial report from Dawn.
Yeah, so thank you, Angie. So I'll go through a couple of things. So just one thing I did note on your report that I think is important to highlight is that your budget columns for the status of appropriations now includes the spread of the $175,000, $175,000 worth of contract negotiations that was up in your legal settlement line for the majority of, well, for all of the budget here. And so what we do is, at this point, is we go back and we take all the contracts that were approved, and we take that reserve of money and put it in the appropriate salary line item and/or remember this year, we also had transportation reserve in there because we were, our bus contract was up. So that 175 actually was fully utilized and has now been spread to each of your salary line items. So if anyone's wondering where some of the numbers may look different, I just wanted to highlight that. We have had a lot of activity in the salaries, and I just wanted to quickly run through those for you, and I will highlight which ones actually will benefit us in the future years and which ones are things that we're just experiencing this year. So we did have two educators that retired post-budget. So obviously, we didn't know they were going to retire, so we didn't take those savings into account because, as typical, when of our long-serving educators retire, we typically replace them with someone lower on the matrix. So with that being said, So with that being said, we are looking at a savings right now from those of about a hundred and five thousand. You will carry that into your fiscal year 22 budget building year. So that's making me feel good already of of we're already up a hundred and five thousand that I have to to allocate to fiscal year 22. We have two educators right now that are on leave. Obviously, they were replaced also with staff that are lower on the matrix, so that's a savings of a hundred thousand dollars. On the flip side, though, with the remote academy that we have, even though we're sharing staff between Pine Hill and Chicreen, we still have two additional educators that we've had to hire to cover that. So that's utilizing some of that savings from the leave. So you can almost think that the leave is actually covering the two additional educators that we had to cover, which actually couldn't have worked out any better. So that fell in our favor. And to date, we've had to hire one additional educational assistant. With the going forward, we we may need to pick up another one or two educational assistants, but we obviously, you you can see, we have some capability to that in the existing budget, so we won't hesitate to do that if it makes for a better school day for staff and students. So we'll continue to update you. I already know that there's going to be one or two other staffing changes that are recently announced but aren't reflected in my financials, so we will bring that to your attention when we meet in November. On the expenditure side, obviously, it's still fairly new. And luckily, we have the reopening grants where we've been able to put some expenditures for technology that was unbudgeted for PPE, for a few other things that we've had to purchase that are COVID related. So we've definitely utilized that, and it's helped us preserve the money in our account in our accounts. We have not encumbered your transportation yet, so you'll see that big number hanging out there. We are in the process, just like we did last year, of working with the other Conley districts and coming up with an amendment to our current year contract to cover the later start, also the Wednesdays that we're not going to school, and positioning ourselves for any other changes that could happen as we go through this year. So once we have that worked out, we'll encumber what we anticipate to be transportation for the year, and we'll have that set in your statements. Prior to that, though, I will bring forward the amendment to all three committees for approval, so you'll know exactly how we're handling the contract for fiscal year 21. Out of district, again, another favorable report I can share with you tonight. Not everything has been encumbered yet, but we do not anticipate at this point any unbudgeted placements. And so we should be good with the reserve that we have set up. I will offer that we actually don't know what circuit breaker reimbursement is going to be yet, so that is the one thing that could impact Sherburne a little bit, because as you know, we're a little more aggressive in Sherburne when we budget and how much circuit breaker we do use. And so that could cut into a little bit of our reserve, but we'll wait and see how that all plays out, but we should be in fairly good shape because we did, like I say, keep some unallocated circuit breaker reserves for some unexpected placements or changes in placement so that we weren't in a position where we would go negative in your budget.
Anyone have any questions for Dawn? Dawn, the transportation, you say it's not encumbered yet, but we'll get the the numbers starting after you figure out how much it's going to be with regards to, you know, Wednesdays. Do you think it's going to come in less than what we budgeted? I mean, will we see a savings or?
Yeah, yeah, we'll see a savings, I mean, right off, because there's the eight days of beginning of the school that we did not use the buses. So preliminarily, I will say what we're looking at is paying on those days, the same way that we paid on the remote days last fiscal year. So we paid, I think, a little over 50%. So we'll say there on eight days, and we're looking at some other smaller savings. It's not going to be that the volume that we saw last year necessarily unless something happens and we end up going remote. But we will see a little bit of savings in mileage because we're not driving the buses on Wednesdays, but some of the hours on Wednesdays we're reallocating right now to the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday for additional cleaning needs that we're having to do for the buses. So it won't be, we're not going to see a full day savings, but we will see some savings from the Wednesdays.
Okay, I just always know that's a question I get, you know, townwide, too, so.
Yeah, so the the most significant savings will be from the eight days that we did not go to school at the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have one. Dawn, is there a potential for added transportation cost if we need to bring on more buses for bringing more kids into school each day?
So I think if that's not going to come down to money, that's going to come down to availability of buses and drivers. I, at this point in time, I don't think we could actually add on extra buses because they're they're just not drivers. So we're going to have to cross that bridge when we come to it. I will say to Andrew's point about logistics. So we are at capacity on the majority of our buses to bring K3 back on the four days and still follow the COVID guidelines. So we will be in an, we will have a an issue if we're also looking to bring back four or five, because we actually don't have the bus capacity. And I've actually got a couple of buses across the two districts, even with K3. I think I have three buses that were over over-registered right now, and so we are trying to figure out, I think, if you're on those buses, you got an email from us just saying, you know, we're looking for people who might be able to drive if you want to drive, because we have too many students on this bus. Our next step, we haven't gotten a lot of response from that. Our next step is to go back and see if we can rework some of the routes. And when there's where there are some seats available on some other buses, see if we can move a group of students off. So that's come to light as we, you know, you never know where you are as we progress through this this phase. But we are now realizing that we will be in it, we will be in a quandary with bringing back four or five as far as bus capacity.
And anyone else? Dawn, I want to thank you because I know this is a lot of extra work on you, because whenever we move the needle and change the goalposts a little bit, it unfortunately rolls to you to figure out, can we do it logistically? Can we, how how do we manage these services that we have to contract and safely and stay within guidelines? So I appreciate it because I know this has been, you know, three times the work, just as everything is remotely. You think, oh, working from home or working, it'll be, it's not easier. It's really, it's just mind-numbing how much effort it takes and how much logistical planning it is.
I will say, we started joking here today that when we go back to the real world, it's going to seem like a vacation every day.
It is, because you'll have this routine and this predictability. We won't know what to do. We'll all be looking at each other going, is this normal?
Yeah.
It will seem easy.
Yeah, I mean, I think for everyone, the workload has quadrupled.
It has, for sure. Okay, so next we have in our packet, the annual enrollment report. Dawn, did you want to speak on this or did Dr. Keo want to? Because it's in there. If anybody, you know, has questions, it's, you know, is there?
I would like to just say a few things, Angie, if it's okay.
Yes, please.
So I I think overall, I mean, you can see the numbers for yourselves. Overall, we came in pretty much where we are, I mean, where we were last year, down two. But what we were concerned about, remember, were the first grade and the fourth grade, where we had three sections for each of those. If you factor in the the remote kids at the first grade level, that brings you to 70 kids. So that's a high 23 average if you split that by three. And likewise, it would have been 79 kids if you factored in the remote kids at grade four, and you would have been looking at class sizes of 26. So those those were real concerns that we ended up addressing, remember. As always, we do, you know, watch the numbers, but in the end, we did have to make that adjustment with staffing. And I can't remember, Dawn, did we add two staff members or did we add one and and move someone?
We just added one, and it actually, you don't see it reflect in your financials because we're using the non-resident tuition fund to cover that additional teacher that we added on in June. So we made the decision in June to add on that staff, this staff position.
Yes. So no real shockers there. I think it's just interesting to look at how things are shaking out, but you know, all I know is that at the beginning of this summer, just like every summer, I was hearing about how many kids are moving in, and what we forget is that kids are moving out, too. And ultimately, things typically shake out about the same. We don't have, we don't see lots of fluctuation at our elementary schools through the years. On occasion, but not no huge shifts of more than 10, I don't think. I don't, we don't have those 10-year numbers in front of us, but I think you'll find that we've been pretty steady. Would you agree with that, Dawn?
Yeah, I think the numbers might be slightly understated in your enrollment, and we'll take this into consideration when we do the budget for maybe a small increase in homeschooled students, given the COVID situation. So my my thought process would probably be to take that increase that we typically have and flow it through our numbers for budget purposes, just so that we don't find ourselves shortchanged if those students, hopefully, we get back to normal and they decide to come back into the building for school. So we'll definitely tweak those numbers a little bit before we start doing our projections to take that into consideration.
So that that was about it, and we just want to keep you guys in the loop.
So that's, the predictions always amaze me as to how close they are. It's almost like odds in Vegas. It's amazing to me that it's so accurate. But thank you, and I think that's a great call, Dawn. Make sure that we do account for those who are probably being homeschooled at the moment. The next item on the list is with regards to the fiscal year 22 budget development guidance discussion. Dawn, is there anything, this is, we planned for it, our our first meeting about it will be December?
Right, so we did alter your schedule a little bit. So typically, in your November meeting, we presented your your next year's budget. Given everything that we have going on, that was just a little too quick for us to be able to, I think, properly prepare next year's budget. So we have rescheduled your November meeting to December, and I, Andrew, you probably know the exact date for the committee members. But it's, I think, I believe, a Thursday night in the second week of December. So this is your opportunity to, I mean, it's a weird year, to bring forward any concerns, wishes, desires that the School Committee has, so us, so that we can start incorporating those into the first pass of the budget to at least get those thoughts going. I think the plan will be to prepare the budget as though we're back in school in the normal way in the fall. And if we are not, then we'll pivot at that point in time. But I think that's that's how we're going to approach it, as though everything is going to be back to a normal school year, and we will look at your enrollment, we'll look at our teach, our class sizes, our teachers, the programming. I think one thing that we could see is that with this year and all the work that Beth and her group has been doing, there could be some new software that we picked up during the remote that may want to continue because there are some educational benefits for in-person learning also. And so that would be the one piece of work that hopefully administration has some time to just take a look at and make some estimates on what they think will carry over versus hopefully, we won't have to pay for Zoom next year. So I'm hoping Zoom is not in our budget. But that there are many other fun things that I think they've found and have found to work in all venues of of teaching. So we could see a little uptick there, but I think other than that, it should be fairly straightforward. And remember, on your transportation contract, we took the bulk of the price increase this year. So it should get back to more normal, smaller increases for fiscal year 22. So we don't have to worry about, even though we have a new contract picking up as large of a percentage as you did last year, which was a little over 20%.
So everyone start thinking about, you know, things that we think may have to be in the budget, but and there aren't any big capital expenditures for next year coming up, are there?
I, to be honest with you, I haven't peaked lately, but we will have that for you at your December meeting to the updated five-year plan.
Because I do know we tabled some things that we.
Well, no, we actually took care of some things on on your operating budget. And so the only, we we moved everything forward, it's just how we paid for it.
Right.
So you have one item left for fiscal year 21 that we have to replace the HVAC unit for the computer lab. So when we find a good time to do that, that money's already been appropriated and we'll we'll initiate that project.
Okay. So that's that, and I sent around to my School Committee members, I I'd sent you that new calendar today so that you can adjust, just so that we can fix that time to move the November to the December meeting. With that being said, the last thing we have is the approval of minutes from September 26, 22nd, excuse me, 2020, which I saw no additions or corrections that needed to be made that I could recall, but did anyone see anything that needed to be added or corrected? Okay, hearing nothing, could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Sherburne School Committee for September 22nd, 2020?
Motion.
Who's that? Was that Megan or Nancy?
Sorry, I was just chipping in because no one was motioning, but I'm just a video participant.
Sorry. Nancy?
Nancy, so moved.
Here's my second.
Megan's second.
And can I have you all take yourselves off mute, School Committee? And I'll do a poll. Mike?
Mike, yes.
Amanda?
Brown, yes.
Nancy?
Nancy, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. And with that being said, we will adjourn this meeting. It is 6:17 for the minute takers purposes. And I will see you all later.